Okay, we'll continue on with our community of the whole this afternoon. We have six items before us. The first item is Watcom Community College President Kathy Hianny Brown will provide an update on the college's current initiatives and future plans.
Thank you very much. Rafika? I really appreciate the opportunity to speak before you, before Mayor Linville as well, and to the audience. And I would like to just take a few seconds to introduce three members of my cabinet. Rafika Clokey, my executive assistant, who's also in charge of ledge affairs, and Nate Langstrat, who is my VP for Administrative Services, and Sue Cole, the Executive Director for Advancement. So they're here to answer all your questions while I just present the information. Isn't that nice? Mayor Linville, you should figure out that system as well. Okay. So, thank you again, because really Watcom Community College and really all of higher ed here in Watcom County is just such a valuable resource. And I found it important to be able to convey to you some important information about our students in our college, because I have to say that we still the best kept secret in town. And it's really unfortunate that people see a beautiful campus but really don't know anything about our students and what goes on there. So from the first slide, you'll see that there is no typical Watcom student. Forty-two percent of our students are first-generation students, 21% are students of color. Many of them are parents returning to college, others are running start. We have a large running start population. And then you can see here that we have about 300 international students from around the world. We have approximately 230 veterans as well, both from this area as well as from outside of the area, because they hear about the wonderful services of our Veterans Office. And so they seek us for education and for opportunities to get back to work. So we are also known as a safe place for undocumented students, and I want to single out Hannah for all of her work in working with our faculty and staff and students in trying to get over major crises that occur in our students' lives. Most of the students at Watcom are transfer-ready. They transfer, a lot of them to Western, but to other universities around the country as well as around the state. Many of our students are also working toward professional technical degrees that get them ready for work. And this year, I would say that we are extremely proud of a number of statistics about how well our students do, and I will speak to that later. I want to say that Watcom is not just about the programs and classes that we offer for students, but it's also for the wraparound, what we call wraparound services to support student success. In other words, we recognize that students are not successful just because of their academic grades within a course, but the support services that we provide to keep them in school, to keep them retained, and to keep them successful, to make them successful. We start, in fact, our efforts early on. We have what we call an upward-bound program, which is supported by the Department of Education. And what it enables us to do is to establish counselors and advisors out in some area schools throughout the county to work with middle school and high school students to get them college-ready. So we're really proud of that effort. That was a recent grant bestowed onto us by the Department of Education. And so it's with these special outreach activities that we really feel that we've been able to better prepare our students coming into the college as well as in the college. Now, I want to say that in this past few years, we've had rather flat enrollments. And the reason for this, it's a common phenomenon in community colleges, not only in the state but also nationally. When the economy is strong, people are working, which is what we want. And we see usually a dip in enrollment in our classes. We have a lot more part-time students than we do full-time students in this time. But even with declining enrollments, what I'd like you to note here is that we have had a positive trend in terms of the number of degrees and certificates that we have issued. And there's been a 22% increase during the time of the 12-13 academic year to the 17-18. The three-year graduation rate of our students has improved from 28% to 32%. This may not seem like much, but it's pretty significant and a very challenging metric to move. So what it translates to is a dozen, dozens of additional students earning degrees every year. Now, in terms of tuition, about 80% of our students who graduate from our college do so without taking out student loans. We have deliberately worked with the legislature to keep tuition at lower levels and much more affordable. We provide student scholarships and grants through the Community College Foundation, and this year we awarded about $300,000 to about 200 students. We do want students to explore other options such as Pell Grants, financial aid, federal financial aid. Last year, our students received over $5 million in Pell Grants. Now, education pays off in a multitude of ways. There's always satisfying work, a solid income. Keep in mind that students who are awarded an associate's degree and go on to work earn or at least have a 30% greater capacity of earning more than those with a high school degree. We also prepare students to develop their critical thinking skills, their analytic skills, and to really invest in a lifelong pattern of learning. Now, this slide identifies various program options for students, and each of these programs provide pathways for students that come with diverse needs and with starting points. So for example, we have those high school graduates who can pursue either an associate degree or certificates, and we have a number of those as well as appealing to older returning students. Now, I do want to speak to Watcom being a key economic driver in our community. We educate a trained and ready-to-go workforce, often responding to employer needs. We have developed and produced and delivered training, customized training, for employee skills for local businesses. For example, at ITech for Healthy Pet, Peoples Bank, and British Petroleum. Now, Watcom brings multiple resources to the community. In addition to students buying power, these includes jobs, our capital projects, and grant dollars. For example, Watcom has an annual payroll of close to $30 million. This includes almost 500 faculty and staff who live, work, and raise their families here. Along with our students, we contribute about 50,000 hours of community service to local businesses and organizations, and that is growing. In the past year, we have secured, I'm sorry, in the past five years, we have secured $30 million in state and federal grants. And that has been some of the important work that we've had to do, simply because our state funding has declined to such a capacity that we have to reach out to develop and expand existing programs. We have invested through quality construction projects, as many of you know, including several small ones that provide local jobs. We are adding two significant capital projects to accommodate growth on our campus. The first is one that you see steel beams being erected along Kellogg, the Phyllis and Charles Self Learning Commons, which will house our state-of-the-art library, tutoring center, and a new Makerspace where you can experiment with 3D printers and the like. Our first student residence hall will provide affordable housing for our students and wraparound services as well to support student life. Our local contractors are Colacurcio Brothers and Tiger Construction. Both buildings are slated to open in 2020. Working closely with employers, we have developed programs like our new Chemical Dependency Counselor Program to respond directly to the urgent need for more trained professionals to work with the opioid crisis. Our programs, if you haven't known, are recognized regionally and nationally. Hopefully, you've heard about our national status as a Center for Excellence for Cybersecurity Education. Now, we not only have been able to, with the support of a number of federal agencies, to expand our program so we can increase the numbers of students we train in cybersecurity, but our national prominence has enabled us to provide training to over 270 colleges and universities across the country. And we provide this training to faculty who will be teaching in cybersecurity training programs within their own higher ed institutions. So as you can see, our students in our program either graduate or move on and join the workforce within three months and go to high-end transfer institutions, however you want to define that, whether it's Western Washington, the University of Michigan. We have a number of students going to Cal Berkeley and the like. And so we're very proud of the fact, through all of our programs and programmatic activity, we've been able to well-prepare our students for the future. Our allied health programs, I have to mention, are well-known. You know, I just recently met a student who was looking for the bookstore because he had, he was coming from Squim to enter one of our health programs. And so I asked him why Watcom, because there is another unnamed college near Squim. And he says, "Well, because we all know that Watcom Community College has the highest-quality program, and I know that if I go there, I can be well-prepared for my career in nursing." And so that's something that we love to hear from our students. And I also want to be a proud mother of our community college and our graduates. But we had a nursing cohort this past year, and they have to take after their coursework these accreditation exams to be certified as a nurse. And so our class, our 2018 cohort, was able to have 100% pass rate on their exams. What this means is 100% of the graduates scored 100% on their first attempt. And the national average is quite much lower. It might be in the 60 percentile. So what you're seeing is our graduates coming up fully-prepared to enter the workforce. And many of them are working in our local hospitals around Watcom and Skagit County. So if you ever go to the hospital, ask for a Watcom graduate, and you'll be insured quality care. So I want to also add, though, kudos to all of you, because many of you have been actively involved and work in our campus, have visited our campus. And if you haven't, I definitely want you to be able to come over to see some of the activity and also to talk to students, because you hear their stories. They're very transformational and very inspirational. And we just recently hosted, who was it that we recently, well, a host of congressional offices, Rick Larson being one, who often comes to our campus to get a feel for our student needs. So I encourage you to do that. Education is such a positive value that we all share in Watcom County, and I thank you for this opportunity to be able to highlight some of what we do. I hope that you value the work that we do. I hope that you value our students, and if you have an opportunity to provide them internships, to provide them service opportunities, we encourage that. And here again, I invite you all to partner with us. I was just very pleased with our Sister City event that we had recently, and the mayors, including Mayor Linville, were all there. And they talked about the value of having collaborations between the city and higher ed institutions within their region. And I think we have the potential to be even greater, and we are part of that equation. So thank you very much for listening, and I'll have my staff entertain your questions. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Knutson and then Councilmember Lillicust.
Just a compliment and a comment. President Brown, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I was enrolled at Watcom Community College in 1981, Marine Drive. It was a one-room little area, if anybody out there can remember that. And I spent a couple of years there while I was still employed, trying to work and go to school at night. And evidently, that didn't work out. But from where you've come from to where you are today, we are blessed in this community to have all of our institutions here, and especially Watcom Community College. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lillicust, please.
Well, let me just start with echoing what Gene said. There's been a revolution in community colleges, you know, time I grew up. And the best community colleges are doing exactly what you're doing. I mean, they are important standalone centers of education and training that didn't use to exist, and they're vital and they're important. And they, not everyone could or should go to college, you know, four-year college universities. I think we need exactly what Watcom is offering. So thank you. I also want to say I'm really glad to see your student housing project going forward. I remember when that was first put into your strategic plan, and I was like, "Really? You gonna do that, really? Because we need that housing." And I think that your students, again, it's an evolution into community college, right? I think housing is an issue, and student housing is an issue, and the fact that you are stepping up to provide some of that locally, I think is very important, especially for your exchange students, for example. So I was really glad to see that that no longer is just in your strategic plan, but you're going to be breaking ground and building. So, thank you.
Councilmember Barker.
Thank you for coming. I feel really fortunate being Ward One and having two higher ed, BTC and Watcom Community College. I am a lifelong learner, and I really enjoy coming out to the campuses. And I think both of those campuses are so beautiful, and what I hear from the residents that I represent around both campuses is they feel welcome there. They walk through it regularly, they love the landscaping, you take really good care of your grounds, feel safe, and I think that's extremely important, and I hope that will continue, especially as we put the park there, and I think it'll be a nice linkage with all the improvements along Cordotta Parkway. I don't know if a lot of folks know how much your organization has been working on reducing barriers, especially as the demographic shifts coming across America to higher ed opportunities, changing your internal structure, your systems. I can say from personal experience, I run into a lot of parents working in the public school, and every time I send somebody out to Watcom Community College, they're a little skeptical, because they're like, "Yeah, it's gonna be really expensive." And almost every single student has come back and said, "They're gonna be able to pay for," like, "They found money, I barely have to pay anything," which has been phenomenal. And then to have that courage to, every time I tell another story, another student that maybe would want to go and learn a little bit more and have an opportunity for upward mobility. But maybe somebody could speak on the efforts of the diversity, equity, inclusion that you've been so highly focused on, and what's coming from that? What do you see in the future?
Yeah, well, we have that agenda of social justice at many levels. One is obviously with the students, reaching out to potential students as well to talk to them about access to higher ed and to make it relatively easy for them to do so. So we do a lot of outreach out into the community, whether it's in the high schools or to the ethnic communities in town. And so that's an important part of it. The other piece is educating our faculty and staff, because we need to learn a lot about each other and how to work and live collaboratively. And so we have an equity project that was really started by a small group of faculty and staff. And this year, our focus and theme will be on recognizing and honoring the indigenous cultures of the county. And so we will have a number of speakers, we'll have a number of conversations and book readings about the Salish Coast peoples. And so part of that is really honoring the ground and the peoples that founded this area and also trying to increase our communication with them and to honor their contributions. So we do a number of things at all levels, but I really appreciate your pointing that out, because that is an important part of the work that we do. And April, thank you so much for being on our campus multiple times and for reaching out to our students. Really appreciate that.
I will just follow up. So anybody that is watching, especially if they live within walking distance, they can contact the college and get on a newsletter that will tell them of all these amazing things that are free for them to come and entertain and learn about. So if anybody's interested, just contact Rafika.
Thank you so much. You're a great ambassador for the college.
Councilmember Vargas, then, Bornhaman.
President Hianny Brown, thank you so much for being here. And I have been privileged enough to be a student, as has everyone in our family. Chris has been to school there as well. So we've been able to experience the incredible gem that Watcom Community College is to our community. I've also had the privilege of being able to present awards to your instructors on your cybersecurity. So I know that we are a leader here in Watcom County in something that I think is very, very important in our society today for us to be able to offer that. And I also was going to comment on the inclusion and the diversity that your college is fostering, and just want to say how wonderful that is to have you here in Watcom County and have this access for everybody that is affordable and has great standards and great staff. So I just wanted to thank you for being the gem that you are.
Thank you so much for those words. And congratulations to another successful graduate.
Councilmember Bornhaman.
Yeah, just want to thank you for your presentation and just to stress again how important the community colleges are. I didn't, well, I did take classes here when, like Gene, when there was no campus at one time, just for, but I started my education coming back as a returning veteran in community colleges, like so many others during that period of Vietnam, and continuing to this day. The community college system has really helped veterans to transition with a more personalized education and smaller campuses. And I just applaud you for those services. The community college system has really helped those kind of transitions. I know it helped me when I came back, instead of jumping into Michigan State or University of Michigan, to go to the community college first into it before following up on others. And it's really helped a lot of veterans to be able to transition back.
Thank you very much for that. Great testimonials for us to use.
I'll go ahead and take a turn. Thank you for your presentation, Madam President. Watcom Community College is woven through my family. My wife Kelly Bishaw helps many first-generation students achieve success. And that, I think, you know, just her words are, "Education is a game-changer," and I totally believe that. And I'm a proud 1999 graduate from Watcom Community College.
Great, thank you. Great success stories. I know, I'm doing well here, okay. Thank you again for this opportunity and be more than happy to hear again, come again, and to, for you to come and visit. And I just want to say that I want to do, point out the police chief here, because the police have had a wonderful relationship with the college. And part of having a safe, secure environment is having that collaboration with the police department, so thank you.
Thank you, also graduate.
Thank you. Thank you. Our second item this afternoon is Hearing Examiner Annual Report to Council. This is the annual report of the Hearing Examiner for 2018 per Bellingham Municipal Code 2.56.060. The report summarizes cases decided, highlights issues raised in the course of applications considered, offers recommendations regarding those issues, and reports on other work performed by the Hearing Examiner. And here to take us through is Sharon Rice.
Good afternoon. That's a tough act to follow. Really, a nice presentation. If you had a chance to review the Hearing Examiner report that I submitted, you will see that once again, I am somewhat scraping the barrel to come up with suggestions on how to improve the code as I've had to apply it. The only actual substantive challenge we had with the code this year is the first one that I listed there in my report. Let's see, it's on page, it starts on page five. And it was a situation in which somebody wanted to replace a structure that was non-conforming as to several development standards. It was oversized in terms of lot coverage, it was non-conforming in terms of setbacks, et cetera. They, for a development project, they wanted to replace the structure entirely and bring it up to code with regard to setbacks and also with an increased parking, which had been substandard, but they needed to keep it so that it was still too much lot coverage. There is no process specifically for that in the code, and planning staff pointed out that if you use the three or four different provisions that apply, you can go through a process that allows non-conforming uses to be redeveloped 100%. And made the argument that we should go ahead and implement that process, and so I did. In that case, there was no evidence of detriment. There wasn't any substantive public comment against the proposal that was going to improve the property. And as I said, it was going to make the parking less substandard, which everybody was very excited about. So it was not hard to employ that sort of jury-rigged process to make that happen. But of course, such a process is more vulnerable should there be an upset neighbor and/or the project proponent isn't satisfied and there's an appeal. This may happen once a decade, I don't know, once every five years, but you might consider making a change to the code by which you could simply insert into VMC 2016-010C that this process is allowed for non-conforming uses and non-conforming structures. It would be a really simple fix. And prevent us from having that creative process again in the future. Again, I really feel very confident about the decision that was issued. Had it been appealed, I feel confident it would have been upheld, but it was a creative process. We might like to avoid those. The only other issue I had with regard to the code was something that came up multiple times this year. There are, the situation is occurring now, of course, where the remaining vacant lots that need to be developed are those that are most encumbered by critical areas. In many cases, the lots are 100 or 95% encumbered by buffers to wetlands or streams. And in that case, it's a lot that was created under the old critical areas ordinance, and so it was developable before, but the vesting to that previous ordinance has expired. Now it has to comply with the current ordinance. The current ordinance incorporates the entire parcel. In order to allow any development whatsoever, there has to be setback reductions, both from the critical, well, from the critical area. And in order to expand the setback from the critical area, it has been routinely proposed by applicants and recommended by staff that we approve a concurrent zoning setback variance. If you scrunch the side or front or rear setback, you can provide more room for the critical area. That only becomes interesting because the zoning setback criteria specifically include a provision that says, "I have to be able to find that the property cannot be reasonably used under the regulations as written." That's at 2018-020A sub 3. Those are the zoning variance criteria. It's the last criterion. In order to find that it cannot reasonably be used, that's a, in other contexts, I would implement that provision pretty strictly and say that nothing else could be done with the, you know, it would have to be, they'd have to make a very high standard to show. Whereas in this case, we have competing variances, the critical areas variance, the importance of critical area setback versus the zoning variance and the importance of a zoning setback. When I have been asked to make that decision, and I have issued three or four of these within the last several months, I felt that I was kind of engaging in a little bit of a policy debate, which is more important, is the critical areas setback really more important than the zoning setback that's required by code? I mean, there are reasons for zoning setbacks. So because it felt like I was doing a little bit of internal policy debate, I felt like that was an appropriate thing to bring to your attention, because you are the policymakers. It might be helpful, you might consider looking at either the critical area provisions or the zoning variance provisions, and expressly stating that reasonable use in the zoning variance criteria includes providing greater setbacks for critical areas. I'm really making that up off the top of my head. My other clients don't have provisions like that. I haven't had exactly the same thing come up here. In most places, the zoning, I'm sorry, the critical areas variance really takes prominence, and so it all gets decided under that context. So I haven't seen this, I can't make a recommendation to you, like I frequently would to another code, for an example. But if, if, if that is the, so, I should back up. That may not be council's intent. I might be wrong in that you find that providing more room in a critical area variance is always going to be a higher goal than maintaining the zoning setbacks that are in the code. So you might give that a little bit of thought. And if I have been implementing it correctly, you might let me know by putting some language in there that indicates that. Alternatively, you may find that if you looked at my decisions, you agree with how I've been doing it, and unless I get alternate guidance from you, I'm gonna keep doing it the way I have been. Again, those are zoning variances and critical areas variances that have been developed by a project proponent in coordination with your planning staff. Your planning staff is, of course, experts in both critical areas codes and the zoning development standards. And so it's not that these have been in any way unthoughtful or careless. I did have public comments on one such hearing where a neighbor asked a question, "If we're bound..." balancing the importance of critical areas protection and setbacks that we're talking about putting a garage right up against a street and that seems like a traffic safety issue, is it necessarily true that the environment's more important than safety?" That's, that was the case in which it sort of triggered, in my mind, this feels like a policy discussion, and I don't do policy. Which is, I expressly don't do policy, which is why I wanted to bring it to your attention. But those are really the only two places in the code where I had any sort of, where I had to think very hard about applying the code and find out, and wanted to know if there was other guidance that council might want to give in terms of code amendment.
Mayor.
First of all, you can see why we like you being our Hearing Examiner. She is doing.
Just turn your microphone, Mayor.
Well, there's a short thing here that I pulled out already once today by accident. So anyway, I want to compliment you on your, on your feedback to the administration and council because that was something that was in an earlier conversation. If you're interested in changing either one of those two policy directions, it would be good to get direction, and then we'll bring back some language for you to review so that you can respond to what has been suggested.
Councilmember Lillikwiss, please.
So I am interested in maybe discussing those issues. I don't know if I want to change or what just yet, but I would like to hear from maybe Mr. Seppeler or his staff. Did they, do you agree that there's something there? And this kind of goes to the issue of your running list, that is, a list of non-critical items that will nonetheless take your staff's time. And how do you feel about, how is your running list going?
We're making progress. What I can say is one of the benefits of the system we've put in place is these recommendations come forward, they're not lost, we put them on the running list at the right opportune in time. We usually couple them with other issues that are related because it's, again, it has to go through Planning Commission with a public hearing, has to do CEPA before that, has to come before you with a notice of public hearing. We want to make sure we fix what we need to fix, and if there's related things, we bring them together. So in this instance, we think the outcome is, is correct, clearly. If we didn't, we likely would be coming forward more rapidly because we'd have ambiguity, and ambiguity is something both the examiner and our department does not like. So towards that end, we think the outcome to date has been good and consistent with our interpretation. Nonetheless, we should clarify it because institutional knowledge is only as good as the folks who were there at the time, and we want to make sure it's permanently recorded for those in the future. So we'll put it on the running list.
Councilmember Barker.
Well, I want to thank you, but I also want to thank Kristi for all the work that she's done. And I just, she's, we have these unspoken heroes like Monet and Tracy, and I think it's just nice for you all to, thank you. And thank you, you're in our office, and you're so polite and helpful, and you're just great. So with that, I do want to say, you know, my first couple of years, I was, well, you're there, you know, the drinking from a firehouse, and so I didn't really get an opportunity to dig in as much to the work that you were doing. But the, now that I have been able to read some of the documents, it really does make us, I feel like makes us better policy decision makers because I can see how you have to grapple with certain things, and then it makes me think about the next time I'm doing policy. So I also find it actually very educational to have you taking on these different, these different cases. And you are very consistent, and you're very fair, and it's really nice to have somebody that's dealing with such difficult things, and I have never received a negative comment, ever. So I hope it stays. But that says a lot because you are, it's usually the more difficult things that have to come there, and there's a lot of motions involved, a lot of money, a lot of time. So I think that really speaks well to the work that you're doing, and I'm thankful to have you there.
Councilmember, Councilmember.
Real quick, I agree. I had a full head of hair when we were doing these kinds of things. Now I'm totally bald, so thank you for saving what hair I have left because when the council did this, it was just ridiculous. It was so political, and it was a football, and it was horrible. But on page, I'm just curious, on page, because I know you've talked about it before, on page three, 446, when it says approved by conditions by pro temp examiner, is that Deb Leb or Commissioner Smiley or whoever has to do that in your absence?
That's correct. And a couple of cases either due to my schedule or an urgent need on the part of staff, or I'm sorry, an applicant to get a project to go, I'm not able to hold the hearing, and we have Commissioner Smiley and also other pro temp examiners that are ready to take cases when I can't. I will tell you, you may, you may not realize, this, the case list here reflects a really high volume of work in the city of Bellingham, and probably because the economy has been booming. There has been a high level of work in every single jurisdiction where I, where I work. Last year, I reported to you that I had let go four client contracts, I believe. This year, I actually let go one more. That client contacted me in March or April and said, "Good luck, our good news, we have four times as much work for you as usual this year." And I said, "Oh, here's my notice. I'm sorry, I barely have room for your usual." So business has been crazy, and that is true of all examiners. So I've had to use pro temp examiner in Bellingham and in every jurisdiction where I work, actually, this year, and that's never happened before.
Well, thanks for all you do.
Council, any other questions, comments, anything else, Miss Rice?
I would really like to follow up on Councilmember Barker's praise for my, for the Hearing Examiner Office Assistant Kristi Baucher. She makes this job really highly functioning and easy. She does a great, great service to the people who are trying to get permits, and she really does an excellent job of coordinating between me and various departments, and that protects me from having to be in excess communication with the city's staff members, which allows my appearance of neutrality to remain intact. I do really work hard to provide a fair hearing. There are, and thank you for acknowledging that these cases are, they can be very contentious. People have very strong feelings. If they, if they've gotten to the point where they're coming to a land use hearing, it's because they have strong feelings. Usually, frequently, those are not favorable feelings. And I, I'm upsetting somebody when I issue a land use decision almost every time. And so I try really hard to, to make space for them, to have their full say, and to actually consider what their, what their concerns are. Even, and if they don't, if their concerns don't register in the criteria for approval, if it doesn't go into what's relevant, I still want them to have had the opportunity to come here and say that. I do work hard at running a fair hearing. So thank you for that acknowledgement.
Thank you.
Mama Baucher.
She's covering her face.
Great, anything else, council? Great, thank you for your presentation.
So much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Our third item this afternoon is revisions to BMC Title 19 Impact Fees for Accessory Dwelling Units. The recent adoption of updates to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance by the city, by city council included a recommendation to reduce or eliminate transportation and park impact fees. The intent of the recommendation from the planning commission is to encourage this form of housing by reducing the upfront costs associated with the construction of ADUs. The council planning committee discussed this proposal on September 24th and October 8th. The committee voted two to one to recommend changes to the staff recommendation and send the matter to full council. And here to take us through is Rick Seppeler. And Greg Alcott.
Actually, I'll ask Assistant Director Greg Alcott to start off, and we'll sum it up.
All right, just to bring everyone up to speed, we, 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 his staff started with the Planning Commission's recommendation to reduce or eliminate impact fees for ADUs. We met with Public Works Parks in the city's attorney's office to discuss the matter. We recognized that, given the size limits and the occupancy limits on ADUs, they would likely have less of an impact on our parks and transportation system than, say, a single-family house. But in order to eliminate the fees completely, we would have to find that there was no impact, and we just couldn't get there. So while we believe that there would be less of an impact from ADUs than your typical single-family house, the impact is certainly not zero. So we developed a recommendation that the committee discussed on 9/24. Our intent, or our recommendation was to reduce the fees from about $4,000 down to about $3,100. This is, this would be one, but we did that by reducing the single-family rate in half. Maybe I'll put this up for the audience can see what we're talking about. You can see that current fees for a single-family for transportation, parks, and schools is about $8,000, a little over $8,000. And it's $4,300 for a multifamily unit. For ADUs, it's $4,071, and ADUs are exempt from school impact fees. For the 9/24 meeting, the middle table is where our recommendation lies, and that was to reduce the fees, as I said, from $4,000 to around $3,100 by cutting the fee for a single-family house in half. At that meeting, the committee voted two to one to direct us to go back and look for additional reductions, to perhaps draw a distinction between attached and detached units. And so at the 10-8 work session, we brought forward the bottom table, which would have exempted attached ADUs if, if the square footage of the house that was going to be converted to an ADU was already habitable space. So if you had a basement that people had lived in that was part of the house, you wanted to convert that to an ADU, we felt that that met the test and could be exempt. We also reduced the park impact fee to one-half of the multifamily rate, and that reduced the overall fees down to $2,600, and that was what the committee recommended. They also asked us to look at attached versus detached space. The committee voted two to one to recommend we include in that exempt category detached buildings as well. I guess like, all I can say at this point in terms of the ordinance that is before you is depending on which direction the council goes, we may or may not need to make changes to that ordinance. So we're waiting for your direction.
Council, Councilmember Lillikwiss, then Borneman.
In the packet, you outlined three options for possible further changes. Could you please briefly discuss those?
Sure. Actually, Chris, can you go through those? Chris will do a better job than I would of going through those.
Yeah, so based on the feedback from the first meeting, the ordinance that's written in there, as it is written, that would exempt attached accessory dwellings when it involves conversion of existing space in a single-family home. So the ordinance already accounts for that. Now, the three options that we've provided to you is, option one, that would add detached accessory buildings as being exempt from impact fees when they are converted to an accessory dwelling unit. The section, second option is a, after we have discussed our original proposal further, the second option is a staff recommendation that clarifies that when you convert a garage that's attached to a single-family home to an accessory dwelling unit, that does not count for an exemption. The intent for the exemption is to convert existing space in a single-family home. We have a number of historically large homes in Bellingham that were developed at a time when families were much larger, four-bedroom homes, five, six-bedroom homes. A lot of those are, those are now occupied by just two people, three people, families are smaller now. And so to repurpose those as a, some space within the home as an ADU, converting a bedroom and a bathroom to an ADU appears to be a appropriate, appropriate thing to take place. And the originally home, original home was, was already accounted for as far as its impacts when it was built for a larger family. The third option, this is a mix of the first and second options where, again, it allows conversion of a detached accessory building to an ADU to be exempt from impact fees if it was habitable space. If it was a garage, just like the case where it's an attached garage, the garage would not be exempt from impact fees.
Councilmember Borneman, then Baughers.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, but the first one is, is if somebody has a lot and builds a small, single-family home on that, 900 square foot, whatever, and somebody has a lot with a house on it and builds a 900-square-foot accessory dwelling unit on it, why are the, how are the impacts on parks and transportation differing, differ, different from the single-family home and the rental business behind the other home? Because each will occupy a new family and new vehicles, and the footprint can be the same. So why would we be looking at cutting in half the parks and transportation fees for something?
So I'll, I think there are a couple of steps to get to the answer on that. The first is, the difference would be that a pre-existing home has long time invested in the system. They are not required, for example, adding on to their home to pay additional impact fees because they're already bought into the improvements we've done. Unless, of course, it needs additional upping of service, you pay for the bigger meter, things like that. The challenge that comes up is that we would suggest that there's a difference between a single-family home and an ADU. Where there's a categorical difference from the Institute of Transportation Engineers on trip generation, it's much less categorically. That's been studied nationwide. They don't generate as much trips. Secondly, there is an issue in the sense that we limit ADUs in terms of their population. We don't limit the population in the house. As long as they follow our family definition, 10 people could live in a house. They could have greater impacts than a house and ADU occupied with lesser numbers. As such, the construct proposed is to say, we believe they are lesser impacts, we believe that pre-existing uses have already bought into the system, and we believe we're assessing them fairly. This is not a proposal that's, it's devoid of a good measure of research based on empirical cases. This is us picking a number. This is us coming back to say there's a rational basis to support these numbers based on demand.
Councilmember Baughers, and then Borneman.
First of all, I wanted to say that I wanted to commend the planning staff for doing the work on here. If we are going to be a city that says that we are going to find ways for affordable housing, we need to walk the talk, and I want to commend you for the work that you did on this. And I'm going to make a motion that we accept the October 8 staff recommendation for attached ADUs with no, with all exemptions and the attached or detached ADUs at a total of 2,600. That's option three, October 8 staff recommendation, which was the last one that is up on our screen here. A second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Councilmember Borneman.
Yeah, I will oppose that based on one specific thing. I can go along with attach, the reductions on attached, but to exempt existing structures from paying impact fees, I can't because you're adding, you're taking a building that has been used, and you're going to rent that out as a separate unit for an additional family. You're adding uses, no matter how you look at it. There has never been a nexus between footprint and impact fees. We've always looked at uses as opposed to footprint. And when you add an additional family with transportation needs and cars, it's going to have impact on transportation. It's going to have impact on parks. And we look at parks, we add parks based on population increases. You know, we, we're. You know, we, we're supposed to add so many acres of parks based on what our population is. As population increases, we have a greater need to add park space. It's been said, well, this won't change, this won't add to other people's costs, but it will. When we add additional parks, it's paid for by impact fees or raise taxes on existing property owners. If we're adding uses to parks and transportation with no cost to the business owner, this is a subsidy to them. So I vehemently oppose giving total exemption from, for that clause for existing, if it's an existing building, that they don't have to pay impact fees. It wasn't used for renting out to another family, so I can't support that one.
Further discussion. Councilmember Barker.
So I think it's important that we can't make an assumption that everybody that wants to utilize an ADU or detached ADU is renting that space out. I think, I think that there's national information that actually says that these types of structures, if they are even rented, they're rented below market because most people end up using them for a family member. So I wanted to just give some clarification as to why I asked for these types of exemptions for those that are just tuning in and wherever this will end up being broadcast. But it was specifically to, I think, part of a conversation with Mayor Kelly when we have Dr. Baker come, I think it was with Dr. Baker. Anyhow, you had mentioned where you had, you had met a woman who was like wondering why she was trying to do maybe an attached ADU. It was already existing, like, why, why would it be any more difficult? And I think what we're seeing is that we're in a housing crisis. We're seeing people doubled up that are still considered homeless, but they are doubled up. And when we see opportunities, families try to use the resources that they have. And if they already have a resource that could easily be divided so that they can move in another family member or another whole family, that they need the least amount of barriers to be able to produce that. And what we're saying, this, this reduction, I don't see it being a huge, nobody's going to go out and build $130,000 ADU because they're like, yay, I'm saving like $4,000. I mean, on, on the whole bill, it's not a huge. But what it is huge for is somebody that already has an inhabitable structure that maybe was built before we said that all you could have is a single-family home, or they do have one of these larger homes where they could easily section it off and either help out a family member or a friend, or try to partner with the city and start helping with the affordable housing crisis and making sure that we can utilize the resources we already have. It'd be part of our climate action plan and other things. And a couple thousand dollars means a lot because these spaces can be easily converted, making sure the smoke alarms are talking to each other and a few other things. We don't put a lot of barriers for somebody to be able to morph their home, to be responsive to the current climate and our current family structure and our current crisis. And so I do think it's, and I wanted to kind of, I do want to correct the summary statement because it does say that we were working to encourage this form of housing. And I think the, the fees, what I was trying to do is make them as fair as possible and to limit the barriers for people that are trying to respond to be better to the climate and, and better to avail, more availability of already, homes that already exist. And again, homes that already pay. So, I mean, I would have supported a little bit broader. I like the first option, but I'm happy to get any of it on because I know, I know of five different families on my street who could do this tomorrow and are very interested in doing it, but that barrier right there will stop them from doing it because they just don't have $3,000 and with the other things that they're going to need to do to make that happen. That's five more units right on my street. So that's, that's a pretty big deal, and I hope everybody will support it and we can move on. But I would like to have, Public Works is coming back with more approach on impact fees. I think that we're having this crunch of like, how do we, how do we tier a system to say, when you're doing infill, you are causing less impacts on the broader system for the, for the most amount of people? So I would hope that Public Works will look at a tiered system when they come back with the impact fees. And that's a separate conversation, but I hope that Ted's listening. Thank you.
Councilmember Knutson.
Just a clarification. Pinky's on, is it on page 457? Option two, staff recommendation. Is that what you're moving?
Uh, 460.
Oh, it's that one, okay.
460, October 8 staff recommendation.
Okay, okay. Zero.
And, zero. And I can, I can clarify that staff option that you're referring to would be equivalent to the option one on page 457.
Well, that's, that's what it was, okay. And just for the exemption, what was it figured out monetarily? Was it, Rick, did you use, or Greg, was it $74,000 or something like that?
That's approximately what it was. That's assuming that we get 25 a year.
Yeah.
Okay, next by any.
That's probably not going to happen. Councilmember Lillquist.
I'm a little bit confused. I need some clarification. The motion that, that Councilmember Vargas made is equivalent to option one?
Yes.
Okay. So I do have, we are saying that option one text is equivalent to table three.
Table three.
Up there.
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, impact fees are, in my mind, has nothing to do with renter versus owner, have nothing to do with accessory dwelling unit versus primary dwelling unit. Impact fees are not supposed to be incentives or disincentives. Impact fees are just supposed to be a scaled impact that we can justify based on, you know, new use, bringing in new users, and that's why we, we adjust it. I'm fully in favor of reduced impact fees for accessory dwelling units because I'm convinced that they will have fewer users, fewer impacts. I'm not so sure I'm in favor of this motion because as I understand this, and I've heard something a little bit different, I think from Councilmember Barker, she's talked about converting inhabitable space that's easily converted. In my mind, table three, option one, allows you to take uninhabited spaces that have never been used for habitation, convert them into habitable spaces, and still be exempt? Is that correct?
Yes, that's what I'm understanding, Councilman Barker's.
Right, and that doesn't make sense to me because that is definitely a new set of users that could not have been there before. There's, and that's the definition of how we justify impact fees. It seems to me if we are creating an entirely new dwelling unit that didn't exist there, whether it's a new-built or conversion of an uninhabited garage, that's a new user. I don't know how you can get, I don't know how you can exempt that to zero. So does this exempt it to zero?
That's attached versus already in the home. It's already there.
Maybe I can clarify.
Yeah, I guess I'm confused about if you converted, I thought if you converted an uninhabited space, you could be exempt.
So the table on page 460, the middle of the page there that says staff recommendation, that would reduce the fees to $2,600. It would exempt attached ADUs that are converting habitable space.
Okay, that's fine.
But it would not exempt detached buildings.
Okay, so then what's the whole garage argument then?
Garages are not habitable space. So conversion of a garage.
Right.
To an ADU would require you to pay impact fees.
Okay, then I guess I don't have a problem. I guess I'm, I'm really having a hard time understanding what is and isn't exempted.
Mr. Sefler.
Just a, if I may, a clarification of the motion.
The only thing that's different.
So, sorry about that. So, the table three corresponds to option number one with the exception that option one includes exempting detached buildings that are converted to ADUs. Table, the table three up there does not include exemption of detached ADUs.
So to clarify, just the backstory so we recall, option one reflects the Planning Commission Committee recommendations. Option two is the staff recommendation, which did not exempt that. Option three was a additional one that furthered that point. So there, there were three we brought forward trying to give you choices. The first was the one that the committee recommended. That's option one.
I guess my difficulty is, Councilmember Vargas's motion was endorsing table three. And it's unclear to me whether or not table three is, corresponds to the text in option one, or if they're slightly different.
Table three corresponds to the, sorry.
It's the same as, if I might, table three, it's the notes that would be applicable on table three. It says ADUs that utilize existing space in the home would be exempt. That's, and tracks with what you did. And ADUs that include in addition to an existing house or construction of a detached ADU.
I guess I'm voting on language, not on a table, so I kind of need to see which table or what it means.
Councilmember Vargas.
I just want to clarify my motion. I am suggesting, I am moving that we approve table number three, I guess because the, I think the option language might be a little confusing. So to clarify what I'm suggesting, we approve the staff recommendation of option table number three.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Lillquist.
I'm, I'm sorry. I want to understand the motion before I vote on it. Table three has footnote two, and I'm trying to understand footnote two. ADUs include in addition to existing house construction of a detached, and I can't see the last word, but it doesn't address the issue about whether or not you're converting, if you're converting a non-habitable space to a habitable space, are you not exempt?
I'm going to ask the clarification then. Does, may I, if I might?
Go ahead.
Does the motion include exempting non-habitable space in a separate building if it were converted to an ADU?
It might be easier if.
Hold on, the question was posed to Councilmember Vargas, let her answer it.
Garage not included, right? So that's, we're not talking about that. We're talking about, I just, now I'm confused. So I, my understanding was if you had a house and it's a five-bedroom house, but you're only using two bedrooms of it and you want to turn it, part of it into an ADU, there is no, then it should be exempt. So that's the way I'm understanding it.
And I hear consensus on that from council. I think the issue at hand is, is whether a detached building that was, staff's recommendation was a detached building that, that was inhabited, like a studio that could meet the requirements and be converted, would be exempt because it was happy, somebody was in it. Maybe disagreement on that. The committee recommendation was a detached building, whether it was inhabited or not inhabited, was exempt. Those are the two things, and we have to, we have to hone down so we can be precise in our language in return with you this evening, should you want to advance it.
Councilmember Vargas.
So if the building is detached, but it is already habitable and has someone in there, then the impact is not changing, so therefore I think it should stand.
And the follow-up, if I might, would be, would it have, if it was not habitable, it would pay, you're proposing it would pay for the impact fee? If it was not, it was a garage, no one lived there. No one used it as a habitable space, wasn't finished.
So I, in that instance, I would support the proposal that is on the last line of this table, which says attached or detached ADUs, which allows impact fees for transportation and parks, but is exempt for schools. So that is what I believe that I am.
Okay. Councilmember Barker and then Borman.
I think to help make this more clear, I'd like to amend the motion to say, to accept the bottom table with option three. And option three says exempt on existing home of livable space. It says not exempt for an attached garage or a detached garage. It says exempt for a detached building that is currently inhabited or is habitable, I guess I should say, is habitable. So it's what you're saying, but it's in option three. And I'd say, I certainly would support number one, but I can see a strong consensus around number three. So I'm, I'm happy to move forward. I think this is really for, it's really for those folks that are finding themselves in a very difficult position and own a home and want to be able to convert it very easily with very low costs. So I'll support that because I think it's going to help the greater good.
Can you restate your amendment, please?
Pinky's motion with the table, including option three.
Okay, is there a second?
Seconds.
Okay. An amendment's been made and seconded. Further discussion, all those in favor, pardon me, Councilmember Borman.
Yeah, one, still have some problems with it. If we have a detached building that somebody's living in, in a single-family area that hadn't been permitted as a dwelling unit, then the only reason we're saying it doesn't have impacts is because it's been occupied illegally and should have been paying impact fees if it wasn't. And because if it's a separate, because it wasn't allowed before. And so it's still going to have, you know, when you rent it out to somebody, impact fees. If it was a family member staying out there and you're going to turn it into a rental union, it won't be the family member usually living out there. You're going to have a new family, and that does make a difference.
If I might respond.
Director Sefler, please.
I don't know if that's always the case.
Not always.
Might be the case sometimes because we have a number of folks who could have members of the family who are living there. It doesn't have cooking facilities. It would be allowed by our current zoning. We could have one of three family, unrelated people who's choosing to live there and come inside to do their cooking. It, it's not categorical to assume that everyone would be that case. Are there some that may have been illegally done? Yes, but that's a separate matter. We're, we're trying to track those down and working through that.
Yeah.
You know, to be fair, I will love to come back to council and document the work we've done on that matter. As we've discussed previously, it's a very difficult issue to enforce, and quite frankly, if council would like to give us additional guidance on how they'd like to see it enforced, we'd welcome that.
Councilmember Barker, I'm going to ask you to restate your amendment, please.
The amendment was including option three.
Okay. Amendment's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries six-one. Let's go back to the original motion on the table, and since it's been 10 minutes, can you please restate your motion?
I move that the council adopt table number three for impact fees for ADUs and detached ADUs.
Okay. That motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Okay. Our next item is Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Staff will provide an update on the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Come refer to as the CAPER, covering the period from July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018. The report covers housing and services program spending and accomplishments. Councilmembers, Councilmembers Lillquist and Borman, do you mind? May I continue? Thank you. The report covers housing and services program spending accomplishment. The CAPER is required by HUD to look back on the past year's performance and progress meeting consolidated plan goals. The city also uses the CAPER to report on progress towards accomplishing goals set out in the 2012 Housing Levy Administrative and Financial Plan. And here to take us through is Samuel Lutz.
Hi, Samuel Lutz with Planning Community Development Department. As you introduced, this is part of the Housing and Urban Development Federal Department requirements of the city. It is in line with our five-year consolidated planning process and our annual action planning process. You guys are involved currently in a budgetary process. I just want to make a little bit of a distinction here in that that budgetary process gives the overall spending authority, but it is really these HUD-required things, primarily the annual action plan, that is focusing on the what and the how that money is spent. And so we dive into that together every spring, and we'll be coming back to you this spring with that action plan for 2019. This CAPER, Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, is a look back on last year's action planning year, which went from July 1 through June 30 of this past So this is the last look back that is tied to our previous consolidated plan that was passed in 2012 and began in 2013. You all approved a new consolidated plan that began July 1 of this year. Our next CAPER, next year, will be looking back on the first year of that. So we review our performance against both that consolidated plan given to HUD So we review our performance against both that consolidated plan given to HUD and against our own levy and administrative and financial plan that was passed in 2012. And it includes all of our HUD funding, the Home Investment Partnership Program and the Community Development Block Grant funding. It includes all of our levy funding and it includes portions of general fund dollars that go to housing and services program activities. So our HUD funding went up last year. That was, the Home Investment Partnership Program funding was increased. And I've heard from HUD staff, they expect basically the same level going into next year if the budget that's been discussed goes forward. So leveraging is important to us. It varies dramatically across program areas, across years. But generally speaking, we've been able to average between $8 and $12 for every $1 of levy funding we put in. When you look at this table, the federal funds are those Home Investment Partnership Program dollars and the Community Development Block Grant dollars. The local city funds are primarily housing levy, but under the services program, that also includes city general funding. And so when we review projects that come to us for application and are in line with our consolidated planning goals, we do consider the leverage and we are looking to try and leverage our dollars as much as possible. So I'm just going to highlight a few. The CAPER document is, is fairly long and there are a number of projects in there, but I'm just going to pick one from each program area to highlight for you. And then if you have questions afterwards, we can go back to other projects. This, I think most of you watched this go up. A new development on the Triangle Parcel down Forest and Champion and Ellis Street there, developed by Mercy Housing Northwest. Eighty units for seniors, most of whom earn under $2,000 a month. It's split between units targeted for people earning under 50% median income and those earning under 30% median income. But all of them are below that price point as far as the, the income that they earn. They also set aside some of the units for folks experiencing homelessness and worked very closely with our homeless outreach team. But unfortunately, there were over 200 people waiting for housing here for these 80 units. So it's just a real drastic need, but this is a wonderful building. It was leased up in six weeks, which is very, very fast for this kind of a thing. All the units were done, designed with universal design. They have a full solar array and I just heard last night, they are producing more power than they are using. And the levy, I'm sorry, the city funds in here were a combination of housing levy and Home Investment Partnership Program dollars. This is fairly common for the city when it comes to new construction. We combine funding sources. We put in approximately 1.9 million total and the whole project cost about $22 million. So that was about a 1 to 12 leverage there for our levy funds. And the other funds in the project were primarily 9% low-income housing tax credit dollars, which are highly competitive. And then there were also some state housing trust fund dollars in the project. So moving on to an example of housing preservation, this one is actually split between the production and preservation programs, but the predominance of units we put under the preservation category. This is an 84-unit apartment building. It's 85 years old, currently owned by Housing, sorry, Catholic Housing Services. And it's a workforce housing building. Twenty-five of the units were not previously rent restricted, so they could charge a market rate for those. There were some pretty serious issues going on with major systems in the building, including the elevator, the ventilation system, sprinkler system, the boiler. In addition, some masonry issues and issues with awning. So significant rehabilitation work needed here, all based on capital needs assessment work done. And so all of that was done and they were able to do it without moving significant numbers of people out. They waited for some vacancies and moved people around to different floors, but it was able to be occupied during the rehabilitation. And very nice in there, they added more accessible units. So there are a total of four ADA units now. All the units are rent restricted, but they range in various incomes. So some of them are under 30% median, under 50% median, under 60% median. Again, this was a tax credit project, but for 4% bond funding. And there were also some historic tax credits in this. It was a total of $13.5 million rehab. In this case, the owner had some equity to put in as well. And the city's contribution was $800,000 of a combination of levy and community development block grant funding in this case. So the administrative and financial plan combines production and preservation goals together. The seven-year goal outlined in that plan is 417 units. There have been 514 units completed under both of those programs, preservation and production. And if you include all the units that are under contract or have some commitment from the city, that's up to 721 units. Moving on to the homebuyer program. This is, this is a challenging one because, as you know, housing prices are just so, so high right now. So we were only able to help two folks with the Down Payment Assistance Program this past year. We just finished some analysis of median home sales prices for the summer months. It's up to $430,000. And even if you only look at small homes, one to two bedrooms, that's $350,000. This program is available for, for folks who earn under 80% of the median income, which means earning less than $4,500 a month, which means they can afford about a $250 home. So even with a Down Payment Assistance Program that can offer $35,000 to $40,000, that gap is just too big. It's just a huge gap. So one of the folks we were able to help was a resale of an existing home that's already restricted through Colson Community Land Trust and then someone who was able to purchase a condominium, which was in that, that low amount that could be reached with some Down Payment Assistance help. And then when we look at the homebuyer goals, I apologize, there's a misprint in the CAPER itself. So we have committed 12 units to the Telegraph Road project of Colson Community Land Trust. Those were inadvertently included under units completed in the initially published CAPER. That has been corrected and your presentation should reflect this. So 50 units have been committed, which is exactly the seven-year goal from the levy, and 33 of those have been completed. Moving on to the community facilities program. This is not funded by the housing levy, but it is funded by HUD through the Community Development Block Grant Program. And we've been able to help a number of facilities through this program, including the Food Bank and others. But in the past year, there was an interesting partnership between the housing authority who owned this four-bedroom, single-family home and it's been used for a while by the Watcom Family and Community Network as the Roosevelt Family Resource Center. It serves quite a few local families and it's used for a number of youth programs, including gang prevention and things like that. The home was built in 1970. Again, it needed some substantial rehabilitation work and improvements to some of the accessibility there. And so that was done with about $85,000 of funding from the city and just a little bit in addition that the housing authority brought to bear. So the Rental Assistance and Services Program is a large program that includes a number of funding sources. And I'll get into a little more detail on the next slide, but you can see we've surpassed the levy goal here of 2,250 people over seven years and are up, getting close to 6,000. Sometimes it's a little bit hard to differentiate those only helped from the levy with those helped from other funding sources because we often have contracts that merge and use multiple funding sources. So we try our best, but it is not an exact science all the time. But I do want to talk about this program. The administrative and financial plan that governs the levy, as you know, has changed over time. Initially, it budgeted only about 9% for services and that is now at 27% because of the real, just drastic needs here. And services cover just a wide range of activities. So I'll talk a little bit about some of the things that are covered. One is project-based services. So Greggy's House is a project that was funded by the levy. Francis Place was a project funded by the levy and now 22 North is just about to open, funded also by the levy. When we put levy funding into projects like those that really serve very, very high vulnerability, very low-income folks, we also put services dollars in to make sure that they, people that live there have, can maintain their housing stability and have the services that they need. So we do dedicate some of that money over many years to help with the operations and the services for those projects. It also includes a host of housing-related services, including rental assistance, housing case management and some more flexible services like the homeless outreach team, some of the youth programs and other programs operated by the Opportunity Council, Catholic Community Services, Lydia Place, Northwest Youth Services, Domestic Violence Sexual Assault Services and the YWCA all have housing services-related programs that the city funds. And again, some of those contracts have a mixture of rental assistance and housing case management services allowed. So sometimes it's difficult to parse out. We try to be flexible with agencies. We know that they need the roof, they need the structure, but they also need the rental assistance and the case management or other services related. And depending on what else is available in the community, what philanthropic dollars are available, what the county is able to fund and, and who is in need, the mix of what is needed at any given time can, can change. And so while we do ask for deliverables and we track and monitor our contracts, we also try to be as flexible as we can so that agencies can respond quickly to the needs that they see. But I did some guessing and I think we've, we serve with our levy contracts about 100 people at any given time with rental assistance. But the predominance of those serves are through housing case management services. And then finally, the basic needs services are also through this program. Those are not levy-funded. Those are funded through Community Development Block Grant and, and city general funds. And a host of programs and agencies that you're familiar with are included here. Bellingham Childcare and Early Learning, Watcom Council on Aging's Meals and Wheels Program, the Literacy Council, Bridget Collins Rebound, the Food Bank, some Opportunity Council programs, Mercy Housing Northwest programs, Northwest Youth Services, Lydia Place, Domestic Violence Sexual Assault Services, Watcom Dispute Resolution, Sean Humphrey House and Law Advocates. And all of these, both on the housing side and the basic needs side, are, are annual, annual funding that we give. We do have a competitive program, but it's typically the same agencies that come in and apply. And sometimes that does change slightly, but generally speaking, the city is a reliable funder to those that perform under their contracts. And lastly, just wanted to give you a snapshot of the existing housing levy. There's only just under 2.5 million that's uncommitted in that fund. As I mentioned before, sometimes our commitments go out many years. So the committed column includes some of those long-term commitments. And all of that you will likely see in the action plan coming to you next spring.
Council questions? Councilmember Knutson?
Just a comment. Thanks, Samuel, for your report. It's astounding to see these numbers on Rental Assistance and Service Program when the goal was 2250 and we're almost up to 6,000 now. You know, we often get criticized here and that's, that's okay. That's the job that we have, that we don't do anything up here. We don't do anything out there. The, the mayor and the council don't do anything for homeless, for affordable housing, for any of this stuff. Where would we be if it wasn't for all the stuff that we do do? We'd be in more of a crisis. We wouldn't even have an identity. So I think at times like this, we need to just, I hope people watch this or hear about it and, and come to us once in a while and say, hey, thanks for all you do. I mean, that's, we don't, I mean, that's something we can't expect because we're public servants, but it's, it's great to see these numbers on the screen and hopefully in the years to come, they'll even get better. So thanks.
Thank you. Mayor.
As you're all aware of, it's Housing Week this week and I attended the kickoff panel last night at the, like, let's say the Light Catcher. No, the Limelight. And it, it wasn't an enormous crowd, but the place was full. And all week long, we're going to be able to tell people the story of what's happening. And I think one of the reasons that there's, that sometimes there's some dissatisfaction is the need grows and we can't keep up. But without the housing levy and other resources that we get, we wouldn't even be able to make a dent. So it was a good presentation, interesting people presenting, including Samia, who did an excellent job, of course. And it was, it was great and these are going to be going on all week. So I hope we can participate.
Councilmember Vargas, please.
Samia, thank you so much. And I do want to reiterate what, what Jean said is to look at almost 6,000 people helped in rental assistance and service programs is great for us to be able to talk to people when they feel as though the city is not helping to kind of show these, these, these numbers in regards to how we're trying to make a difference and meet the demand. So I, I'm very proud of us for the work that, that we're, we're doing and that you're contributing to and making sure that we're using all the funds to our best of our ability. So thank you for this presentation and these are wonderful for us to be able to share with people what we are doing at the city.
Thank you. Council anything further? Okay, thank you. Our fifth item this afternoon is a resolution setting the dates and times of the 2019 City Council meetings. Every year, the City Council creates the meeting calendar for the following year and approves it by resolution. Apparently, I'm presenting on this topic today. I didn't know that. I kind of knew that, actually.
Who approval?
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify, pardon me, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Motion carries seven, zero.
Where's go Monae?
Monae did let, let me know that I was presenting this just right before the meeting. Thanks, Monae, appreciate it. I'm going to move an item out of order. This is the sixth item, which is the work session on the proposed budget. I'd like to get the meeting minutes approved, older, new, and then, then go to that work session. If that, is that, please, the council? Okay, so minutes for approval, we have two sets, September 24, 2018, October 8, 2018.
Who approval, both?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for the discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Older, new? Councilmember Barker.
So I recently attended the Birchwood Neighborhood Association meeting and there was, of course, some talk and disappointment in the fact that we've been waiting to have that connection between Cornwall Park all the way to underneath Coal Mine Bridge and even in preparations of that, painting the bridge and doing the international market and really hoping for, hoping for that. The neighborhood wanted to know if, since we know that's off the table now and that's been part of the bike and ped plan, could we start looking at Squalicum Way to think about how there might be some buffered lane or safer access for the kids that are trying to get back and forth from the parks or the families that are trying to join the neighborhoods? So with that, I wanted to move, well, I don't know if I have to move. I just think, I can ask, thank you. I, Roxanne's here telling me, make a motion. I, I would like us to look at the bike and ped plan and see if we can't figure out to look at the parks plan and take that out and then make a new, so that we still get that connection and we're not waiting for the railroad to sell us the property.
Probably a good idea because we might be waiting a long time.
Yes.
Yes, I'll bring that up with Public Works and Parks and Planning and.
Okay, thank you.
We'll figure out what, what we can do.
Thank you.
Great, anything else for older, new? Councilmember Katzen?
It's nice to see Brother Borneman back on the dais and his fighting spirit.
Welcome back.
Welcome back. Okay, great. Anything further for older, new? Okay, our sixth item this. Welcome back. Okay, great. Anything further for older, new? Okay, our sixth item this afternoon is a work session on the proposed 2019 and 2020 city budget. The Police Department and Municipal Court will present their 2019 and 2020 biennial budget plans. Budget work sessions are held in the mayor's boardroom on the second floor of City Hall in the mayor's office. Immediately following that, council will go into an executive, executive session. We have three items this afternoon. Potential litigation, litigation Washington State Association of Plumbers and Pipe Fitters versus City of Bellingham. And the third item is also potential litigation. And I'll be back to adjourn at approximately 4:45.